Invite everyone to stand for the pledge of the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where we stand, one nation, undervalued, individual, liberty, and justice for all. We have a big audience tonight. Thank you all for coming this evening. We have our new attendee from the Cecil wig, Sam. Is it Sam?
Yep.
All right.
She should get a parting gift for coming here in this weather.
Very good. We do have a forum. We started the meeting at 6:00 and we did have a little bit of confusion. We had actually postponed our initial 6:00 meeting with the Standard Solar folks because we needed to talk to our attorney in regards to a couple contractual questions. But I think the misunderstanding was that we were postponing the 6:00 and going to start at regular time at 7:00. But the meeting, we had scheduled it in the paper for 6:00 to start. So, everything that we do from here on out has to be unanimous when we make these motions. So, I got a motion to approve the minutes of January 7, 2015.
I'm opposed.
Got a motion and second any discussion on the minutes. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Financial report. Do we have a motion to approve the financial report?
So moved.
So, I got a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna make that discussion. Lou, we can't, I wouldn't recommend going with the, I'm not sure if we're... We could go down to...
T. Rowe Price.
Yeah, go ahead.
I have the consensus of the board already.
Okay.
And I'll just go, the investment advisory agreement with T. Rowe Price involves the Elton Police Pension Plan for other funds of the town because pension funds are in a trust, L-Y-M-T, one we can trust, simply and exclusively for retirement benefits and collateral expenses for the plan and are not used for general government or proprietary uses. Pursuant, the plan committee engaged, T. Rowe Price, or intended that we engaged T. Rowe Price for an advisor for the, for our equity bonds and things of that nature for investment. And our council, which is White for Taylor and Preston, reviewed the agreement and also internally, was internally reviewed by T. Rowe Price, their council. And I presented tonight, I need to have board's approval for this advisory agreement so we can go forward with investing the Elton Police plan funds.
Do we have a motion to approve the investment advisory agreement?
I'm opposed.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So, we'll make sure it's just us three that sign. I don't think that we should have all five sign?
Only, only your signature.
Okay, very good.
Hey, what about American Red Cross?
Yep, you can go for that.
Also. American Red Cross of Delmarva actually leases the property, 207 Blue Wall Avenue, the building next to the Department of Public Works. It's leased at for, since 2004. The current lease expires March 30, 2015, and they requested a three-year extension on this lease agreement to bring it to 2018. I would recommend that we lease the property or renew the lease with American Red Cross of Delmarva, that 207 Blue Wall Avenue property.
Do we have a motion to approve the Red Cross and Delmarva three-year lease?
Certainly, I do.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I don't believe we'll have any issues with the annexation resolutions.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just giving you an update on that.
Uh huh.
YMCA, of course, Mr. Kevin, but I think serves on their board.
Nope, we bear weight on it then.
No, he's there.
Yeah, but if he's serving on the board, should he vote on that?
You don't have to vote, it's already...
Oh, very good.
This is, the, their, their resolution is already effective. They are in town, limits now. I'm giving you an update on the sewer. The YMCA engaged McCrone, Inc. to do the design of the sewer enforcement improvements on their property. They have to set up a force, I mean, a pump station and a force main to Route 40, and then it'll cross Route 40 and tie into a two-inch force main on the other side that the town owns. The two-inch force main that goes across Route 40 will be maintained by the town because the state highway will not permit private sewer services to be in the right of way. So, we'll take it over. The only part the YMCA will maintain is from their building and on their property. The George Patchell, I contacted him today for the latest update, he anticipates, given no problems, that they'll have this, they've met with a contractor, McCrone, and also they, they hope to get the completion done by April. We're looking at April to get it done. There is $123,250 major facility sewer fee applies to YMCA. However, the, believe it or not, they actually got a grant through MDE to pay it, and we're going to bill them and then we're in communication with the MDE and they will pay that $123,250 on behalf of the YMCA so they won't have to bear the burden of that cost, although they would bear the burden of construction of that, I don't know with the construction as they just met with the contractor. So theoretically and hopefully, their sewer main will be in operation by or on April of 2015.
Very good. Any questions on the annexation? Very good.
The next act item I have is resolution, Order 12 of 2014. This was already enacted by the board. This is the, believe it or not, the town's first detachment or de-annexation. There are three properties belong to Mark Nemec and are located on Dela, I mean, sorry, Delancey Road. Two of the parcels are unapproved and one is improved. The improved parcels is located at 345 Delancey Road. This amendment resolution goes into effect January 22nd, which is tomorrow, at which time those services will be provided from the town. We've already notified Waste Management that they would have to contract with, with a pilot hauler and also the police department and all the other departments have been notified that these properties no longer within the town. What we would do is notify the Department of General Services and also probably the assessment and taxation office to, just to make sure they know that those properties as of January 22nd are no longer within the town. So, that completes Nemec property and that basically is on its course.
Very good. DJ, what we did is the, and I explained exactly what the misunderstanding was.
Well, it's so bad it's Earl not here because of me, though.
Yes.
I am so sorry. I use my public...
Listen, it worked, but listen, it worked out well. We got, listen, it worked out well. You were a little bit late and we got the water. So, it worked out beautifully and I loved it. Actually, what we did is we did open up the meeting and we went through the minutes, the financial report, dispersments of funds, and if you have any questions on those, I'll let you kind of ask them under your report.
Fair enough.
And then we started with the T. Rowe Price and down, the items that I knew that weren't, there was no, really no issues with any of that. The advisory agreement, the lease with the Red Cross, and the other two were just comments. But the water and sewer rates, the parking meters and parking schedule, we did not touch. We're waiting for the full board to talk about that. They could be the, the... There's Earl.
Earl.
Earl, you mean, you called me, probably you were...
DJ Fuller tricked me all the time. He wanted to see if one time I'd go listen to him. Excuse me, I'm here. Excuse my appearance.
He's been here the whole time.
It's tough now, you're my best friend, Chris.
All right. Well, very good. I don't believe that what we're gonna do is, let's, I guess I'm, I'm kind of, are we gonna have to re-convene? Can we just go ahead and keep moving forward with the agenda?
Since you have a full board now, we can give release three items pretty quick and then you've done all that business except for your business. Because the ordinances for parking meter zones and parking schedule follow the consensus of the board at the workshop. Just create the ordinances that bring that consensus into effect.
Okay, well, let's, let's keep rolling, let's keep rolling and moving upwards.
Did you have to wait?
Yeah, do we have, we didn't have to wait until 7:00 when normally everybody's here? Is everybody, is the public aware of that, that we're just moving right through this advisory?
Yeah, we advertised.
We advertised for the meeting at 6:00.
And we're starting at 6:00 for everything?
Yes.
That's just the solar?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, that's correct. So, I'd say we kind of go ahead. Are we gonna have to re-convene, do you think? Or do we have to take any action on the Standard Solar tonight? Cause that...
No, I wouldn't. I didn't anticipate, cause we don't even have a finalized agreement.
So, I'm kind of thinking what we'll do is we'll just take care of all of our business and then we'll, then we'll just shut it down and, and allow everyone, have the closed meeting to discuss with the council and we move on. Okay. Lou, go ahead and start with the, is everyone warmed up? You guys warmed up? Let's go right to ordinance 8-2014, the water and sewer rates presented for adopted or as amended. And I guess at the last, at the workshop, we discussed a little bit about the water and sewer rates and, and I have counced the members of the board all over the place. I started out discussing sewer rates. I came back with a slight presentation on why I think that we should drop the water rates before we even move forward with the study. And what I'm gonna ask the board tonight is to accept ordinance 8-212014, water and sewer rates presented for adoption as discussed. And the change here is that we would be looking for an 11% decrease in the water rates.
For customers of 30,000 or less.
As presented. Do we have a motion to accept that?
I make motion that we accept of 8-204, water sewer rates as presented.
Do we have a second for discussion?
I will second that motion.
Very good. Discussion.
Discussion. Now, I've written notes all day, but you're asking for that change pending a water study?
That is correct.
Okay. How long is that change to be effective?
I would say the change is effective...
Would that be an interim period of time?
I would, yes. I, my intent is it would be an interim period of time because I strongly believe that we're gonna be able to lower it more.
Okay, certainly, I understand. You may have mentioned the fact that the water study can, you know, change even after it's done, you know, depending upon, you know, businesses leaving or what have you. So, the billing dates that you're asking for, for this initial decrease would be what months? January, February, March, with the bill coming in April?
I think we have to wait a little bit longer.
Yeah, because of the ordinance. But this one would be for the billing effective February, March, and April. So, that would be reflected initially on the May bill.
So, the, the...
For three, for...
For the three months, February.
Yes. So, the residents won't feel that 11% savings until May of 2015. And as I said, just to throw this out there, I believe that the proof is in the numbers. And I think that if we accept this, we take a look at, and I'm, I'm sure that we'll probably move forward with the water study. And I'll bring that up under my report. But if we, even if we don't do a water study, we look at it in six months, and if it's tailing off the wrong way or the right way, then I think we adjust at that point. And I know that there were some questions and concerns about future infrastructure costs. Those are the unknowns. Until we put this capital plan in place, which we are trying to work on that now, I've asked department heads to give us that information, I don't think that we ever know what those costs are until we start to develop that plan. Cause we've never really, we don't really know what infrastructure we want to replace.
I would like to make comment that since you have taken over the board, there's been a lot of changes prior to you being on this board. And I'm just happy to see someone that's taken the initiative to actually go and go out on them to try to give back something to the taxpayers. And as everybody knows, I've always been for trying to give water, not water, a decrease in the water and sewer bill. But the thing is, we didn't really have the right avenue. And he's justified the reasons why we were gonna give the 11%. And like I said, I really appreciate someone on the board that is actually able to go out and, and seek a new alternative.
Thank you.
I can identify, I appreciate that too, but I still have some questions because you don't want to too much leave the public. 11%, I agree with you. We all want to make that adjustment, but that also could change, even though I guess we're trying to make the attempt to help our consumer.
I believe if we don't change it, I believe that that fund is gonna continue to grow and grow and grow. And I don't believe it's gonna have money. There's gonna be more money than, than we really have any planning for it. I think until you have planning in place that you want to use our residents' money, I just don't think that we should be the bank holding their money. When we need it, then we use it. We, we would ask for it. But right now, we're collecting, in my opinion, we're collecting money for really no reason.
I have to commend the mayor as well as Earl did on when we originally did the study back in 2011, the, what we were spending with Artesian. And to find that savings now alone was terrific. And I'm glad that we found it. And for that reason, I think we can do this.
Thank you.
And also, Steve, in regard to what we're asking here before the vote, we have identified all water users, or no, we still have some that are not identified, or we have identified all of them?
Well, I guess we don't know what we haven't identified, but we just...
Okay, fine.
We haven't identified. But certainly, we're out there now and actually just recently interviewing with the, the salesperson who sells the water meters to us, Alby Water Census Meters. Kind of led us in a direction that these larger meters, that these big companies use, Hopple, Trumo, and Gore, you know, if they, as they age, and we know that they're old, the meters are old, they're very expensive and they're old, that they, they just naturally tend to underread. And we're kind of focusing in a different direction now to try to get some accuracy testing on these larger meters, cause there could be many unbilled gallons out there that are paying to both the, obviously, the revenue to the town in addition to the accountability for the order produced and bill to the customers that is at the heart of that report with the, with the state of Maryland.
And also, before we make a decision here, you, would you please send us a list of people that we don't bill, so as commissioners, we know who they are, like the library and all them. You know all of those, of course.
Well, I don't know all of them, cause you don't build, but I do, I do have a list from before that, like I said, that the churches and...
Right, that's what I'm saying, right. Because I know Rob was trying to find that same...
Yeah.
My questions I answered.
Commissioner?
I, I agree that there, there should be a decrease in looking at the numbers. I'm just not convinced that it's the percentage that we think that it is. One of the problems in moving to Elton 13 years ago, that I didn't know what certain things was, were, the different increases that came up. It didn't give a clear picture of what was going on in the town. And it wasn't tried and truly studied. And I don't want to give a falsehood to anybody that we can do this and then we have to go back and maybe take some back or, or make it greater only to decrease it then again later on. And, cause then we're bouncing all around. And we have expenses that this study said that we were supposed to do, according to the study that I saw, that I'm not sure that we actually did, that it built in cost factors for replacing infrastructure. And I'm not sure that we've done those things, which I know that, I can't imagine that we did because we don't have anything in place saying this is what we're gonna do, this is what we're gonna do, this is what we're gonna do. What I would like to see tonight is that we just table it. But how much would it be per customer, per quarter? How much would it be per customer per quarter on the average?
What is proposed?
Cause it's a hundred, it's $192,000 is what we're talking about, right?
About $196, roughly, right?
Okay, I'm off by a couple grand.
Right.
So, you take that, divide that by how many users?
Well, for the, those using the minimum amount, which would bill 9,000 gallons, would be, in town, would be $4.59 per quarter.
So, we're talking $4...
Eighteen thirty-six a year.
Okay, so $4.50 per quarter is what we're talking about for the, the minimum user?
The minimum user, that's correct.
So, the maximum user is going to be what, $18? Is that right? Eighteen...
What do you mean the maximum? Up to, those use 30,000 gallons, they would save about $15 a quarter.
$15, I was thinking $18. So, it's $15 per quarter, which we're only talking $60 per year. But what I would like to do instead, instead of throwing a big 11% out there, let's do the study. At the end of the study, we'll keep track per month and we can rebate the money back to the customer then. At least we come out with one clear defined percentage that we're gonna move forward with. We still accomplish what you're talking about by saving money of $4.50. Can you, can you set it up on a percentage as far as a rebate?
I'm not sure.
You have, you have quarterly billing coming?
It would be, you'd need like credit on the bill?
Yeah.
Yeah, something like that, because you couldn't send money out of your...
No, there would be, it would be, it would show a credit on a bill.
I'm not sure the software we use for our billing has the ability to throw just like a credit amount on there. I'm not certain, to be honest.
We'd have to look at that.
Yeah, I have to look.
Cause this way, it would accomplish everything that everybody wants. We, you would still get the A percentage or a money back to people that need it. And I want to, I mean, we all live here, of course, we want to pay less. At the same token, I'd like to come out and say, one clear voice, as Rob, you said today, everybody, the best thing, everybody walking together and using the same voice is, okay, we're doing this. And then it's this for the next five years. We already have stuff in place or fault provoking ideas of what we're going to fix, how much money we're gonna need. We don't know how much money we're gonna need for those meters. So, there's an outlay of cost upfront. And I'm not, I'm not saying that, you know, $60 a year isn't anything, but in the grand scheme of things, we have a lot of things that we need to fix. And which would, which would cost the taxpayers less in the long run.
As a taxpayer, when the study was done, like I said, and again, I don't like to talk about I, but I must say, I was all against the, the rate increase from day one. Now, if the taxpayers are paying for something that was not legitimately sound as far as the numbers being projected, at that time to do a, a survey to project where our cost is gonna go for the next few years, why should we force the taxpayers to continue to pay something that they shouldn't have been paying from the beginning?
Don't disagree with me.
There's the pusher. And the other thing is, after all these years with the step increase, again, the statement is, there's gotta be a better way of paying for this, except for charging the taxpayers every time for when we have to increase it. We have to go back to taxpayers. And, and it's by the time we gave something back to the taxpayer. Now, the, the survey, I didn't want to spend the $20,000 for the survey, but yet it's crucial that we do that to see exactly what we need to go for, now that we have recruited some other findings on the plus side. So, again, I'm saying, here's a good opportunity for us to say, instead of sitting back and saying, okay, we're still gonna charge, 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 give it back to them. And if it, if it takes a year for us to say, okay, here's what we have to do, the cycle, I think Mr. Givens was asking earlier, how long is this gonna be in effect once we do this for taxpayers so we won't deceive them? Even if we gave them a break for a year and then we have to go back and reverse that because of the study, then I think we're doing a service to the town.
Thank you. It just, it just scares me not knowing, having to vote on something where I don't have clear and, and defined data. And, I mean, could, could we get the clear and defined data, take the, say it takes three months, take three months of 11%, add it to whatever we actually come up with, so this way that, that helps everybody. I just, I feel uncomfortable voting on something I don't have data for. It's not that I don't want to do it, I want to, I want to do it.
No, I hear you. Listen, I hear you loud and clear. I guess the, the strongest part of the study would be, is the mayor and commissioners in 2010 voted in favor of this because of these parameters that were placed in front of them. Probably the largest being pulling 375,000 gallons a day from Artesian, and we were able to lower that to 250. I would say this, we know in 2019, our goal is to drop that at least down to 50,000 gallons. So, there's gonna be that additional 20, another $25,000 to $30,000 of savings. So, if we enter into a, do a water and sewer study today, we're gonna have to do another one in, prior to that or around that 2019 area. Or we should do one every four or five years if, if we tend to see the pot growing or decreasing. Right now, I see the cup is, in my opinion, is running over because we have no plans in place to, to use this money. And I, I, I don't want to give that money back, that's not my intention. The money is sitting there. I just don't want it to grow anymore until we understand what we want to do.
And I think we see that in the financial report with the amount of money that's in the water fund and sewer fund and major facilities. So, I think the time, I, by looking at those numbers, I think we could definitely drop 11% as far as repairing infrastructure and what we need to do. In the past, I think what we've done is, something breaks, we fix it. We have never really had a capital improvement plan for infrastructure.
I have to comment that, I guess the board probably overlooked this fact, but one of the reasons we have quite a bit of money in the water fund is because we've been successful in getting many hundreds of thousands of dollars for grants.
Yes.
So, one of, one of the capital improvements that we've made as a succession was the all the water towers.
Right, right.
Every single water tower has been refurbished, including the, we're cleaning on the water hill, and we were successful in getting $448,000 towards that probably $700,000 cost.
So, we have not had to touch that.
So, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
Instead of the rate payers paying that $448,000, we've actually got money through the state to be able to do that. And we've got hundreds of thousands of dollars over the years, thanks to the, the efforts of G. Minner to get this through the CDVG program. And that's one of the reasons that people get the impression we're not doing anything. We are doing very expensive things, but we were fortunate to have 75% of the expense of those things paid through grants.
All right. Now, now, can I piggyback one minute real quick?
We have several other projects coming up that aren't covered by grants because of the nature of those projects, which are gonna be probably well over a million dollars for this, for the water. So, we have to keep in mind that the two wells we're cleaning now are well over a million dollars probably.
And that, that's what I'm, that's what I'm fearful of, that we don't know the whole ball of wax. Steve can give everything to them, they can look at it and say. And it was, it was a total of $2.1 million, wasn't it, of, of grant money that we got for all of the water towers? Am I right on that figure? Just over $2 million, right?
I don't know if you can tell me, but it's, it's a, it's a, it's a large number.
That we would have had to pay ourselves out of that fund. And that, again, that's the only thing.
Spoiler.
I just want to see the whole ball of wax before I vote, before I vote yes.
I understand. What you're, I think your comments have been well taken, well noted. Do you have any additional comments? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. And, and listen, I want to let the board know, thank you for your support on this, but I truly will tell you, I'll take responsibility for this board if it is not the right message to send out there. I strongly believe that this was the right thing to do. And I strongly believe this 11% back to the residents of the town is gonna be well taken by them. And I don't believe that we have jeopardized our future of the town whatsoever by making... by making that stoppage.
I don't think you have to take the, it's not going to be what you call a hit. I mean, we made every effort. I know I spent all afternoon on this talking to all of them, and I think that DJ Earl and America have done the same with their responses. So, you know, collectively, I think we've really looked at it.
I know everyone did.
To make the decision that we have.
Listen, and, and I can tell you, I duly noted, I understand, uh, everyone's feelings on it, and, uh, once we get down into the, uh, each of our reports, we'll bring up that water and sewer study. Lou, the second item, the ordinance one dash two zero one five parking meters ads.
The, yeah, uh, this ordinance events, the, uh, the, uh, chapter ten, we grew parking meters zones of the town, the town code. And, uh, there's some minor, uh, textual changes, but the, the, the approach here is that eliminate South Street and one oh seven North Street as parking meter zones, therefore the parking meters will be removed from South Street and from the North Street parking lot.
Uh, but they will be enforced by three hour parking.
Well, that's the other ordinance. This is all parking meter zones.
Gotcha.
Even as a zone.
Gotcha.
Then we get into the parking schedule.
Very good. Do we have a motion to, uh, introduce ordinance one dash two thousand and fifteen?
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion on those zones? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Ordinance two dash two thousand and fifteen parking schedules presented for introduction.
The, um, ten point sixteen of the town code, uh, has been modified to include South Street, both sides of South Street, uh, for three hour parking, um, eight AM to four PM Monday through Friday, and from East High Street to Howard Street. And one oh seven North Street, three hours, uh, extended three hours from eight AM to four PM Monday through Friday. Obviously, uh, outside those crambers, you could park in, uh, until the next day. But that allows during those hours, a three hour parking, uh, random.
Do we have a motion to accept for introduction ordinance dash two dash two thousand and fifteen?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I think that's it.
All right, very good. Alrighty, uh, let's go right into my report. Uh, we have a, a couple things I wanted to mention, uh, and I guess a couple meetings ago, I wanted to give everyone a, since the president gave his State of the Union address last evening, I can give my, uh, uh, updated on the, uh, financial status update, end of the year report, and, uh.
And the government spoke today.
I'll do it.
Yeah, I just know, man, you could have had to leave it outside.
All right. My, uh. My iPad isn't working right now, wait a second here.
This is down, Governor O'Malley and, uh, Lieutenant Governor Brown's picture down, they won't get the, the new pictures up. Hogan and Rupp.
Okay, there we go. Uh, wanted to let everyone know, we have, uh, a statement of revenues and expenditures, the budget versus actual. And I think that, Steve, did you send this to everybody? I think everyone got it.
I did.
Okay.
There's a work copy.
And I just wanted to kind of review it, and this would have been as of December thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen. Uh, our, our current budget, uh, as far as revenues go, we, we, uh, revenues, we projected , uh, to begin in the, beginning of the fiscal, we were going to receive about eleven million two hundred and six thousand dollars. Uh, up to date, we've actually, or through twelve thirty-one, we have received eight million one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. So we have not collected, uh, a little bit over three million dollars. And the bulk of that is in real and personal property taxes we haven't received. Uh, on the, uh, expenditures, on the general fund side, uh, currently, once again, to have a balanced budget, we were at eleven million nine hundred and fifty-two thousand. Year to date through twelve thirty-one, we have spent five million five hundred and eighty-six thousand. Uh, we still have, um, planned expenditures of five point nine nine zero. So through half of the, halfway through the year, uh, we're tracking right on target per se. Maybe, uh, spending less than what we've, uh, were, were supposed to, but we're tracking fairly well. The, uh, actual funds, I want to put this on record like I did previously. Currently, today, the town of Elton has, in their general fund, the fund balance, uh, I would say fund balance being, uh, kind of like our total amount. We've got three point nine million sixty-eight thousand four hundred and ninety-eight dollars in our general fund. Our water fund, we have one million six hundred and forty-four thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollars. In our sewer fund, we have seven million four hundred and seventy-two thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars. And in our major facility fund, we have five million eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand one hundred and four dollars. Collectively, for a total of eighteen million nine hundred and fourteen thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars, or four hundred and thirteen dollars. Uh, amount owed, the, uh, current obligation that the town of Elton is under, uh, we have a principal balance owed on debt service to the general fund of one million three hundred and eighty-six dollars and, and three hundred and thirty-nine dollars. And that was, uh, from miscellaneous consolidations of loans over the last couple of years. And then when we get to the sewer fund, uh, based on the, uh, building of the wastewater treatment plant and maybe a few other little things, we have a total owed of a little over fifteen million fifty-one thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars. So we have, uh, I consider ourselves in pretty good shape. We have a total of, uh, we're about sixteen million dollars that we have in debt service. And, uh, for a town the size of the municipality of the town of Elton, I think that we could probably borrow up to about eighty million dollars. So, uh, from, from that standpoint, uh, I think that we're in fantastic shape as a, as a municipality. And, uh, I think if, uh, uh, we share those numbers with, uh, other municipalities, not only in this county, but in other counties, I think they'd, uh, wonder how in the heck the town of Elton has been able to do that over the years. Uh, we are not a broke town. So I think that that's the, uh, message I want to get away from, uh, from years before. It was always, we were, uh, we were, we were, uh, trying to scratch our nickels together, and that's certainly not the case. Uh, so that's the, uh, kind of update to where we're at on that. I attended, uh, last week, I attended the Cecil night in Annapolis, uh, actually drove down and, uh, had a great evening. I was able to spend some time with the Secretary of Planning. I met, uh, several of the, uh, new senators and new delegate and, and members of the new, uh, members, some new delegates. And, uh, I think that we represented the town of Elton very well. Um, there's a, uh, some very positive things that, uh, I think came out of that meeting. And, and one, uh, that's, that's was interesting to me was that the, the state of Maryland has been trying to fund what they called the Purple Line, uh, which is a, uh, transportation initiative that would include like, I, I don't know, really know if it was a subway or, or light rail that would go around the Silver Spring, Maryland, out, out and around and, and back up through the Beltway into DC. But, uh, I think that that's going to, uh, it, it seemed like the interest for that had, has lost a little bit of steam with the new Secretary of Transportation. And it appears that, uh, one of his initiatives could be, uh, to complete the light rail through Cecil County. And, uh, so I wanted to, we'll know more after this session, but it kind of goes back into what we talked about, uh, several months ago, might have been at a workshop, that we may have to put some funding aside, uh, to show our commitment, if we have our commitment to, uh, the Mark train coming through Cecil County or through the town of Elton and, and to stop being here, uh, because that would be something that, uh, it won't be a two thousand and twenty-five project. Uh, I think that if they approve the Perryville Center, I think that, uh, this could be by the year two thousand and twenty, uh, based on what I was hearing there the other day. So very interesting news when it came to that. Uh, last evening, uh, Gene Mitter, Commissioner Van Renan, myself, attended the county commissioners' meeting, and we talked about, uh, we went there in opposition to the county's water and sewer master plan. Uh, we went there to talk about how the town of Elton, uh, wanted to try to include in the language of the water and sewer plan of the county about our urban growth plan areas. Uh, what has happened over the years is that the, uh, county has decided to create areas around the town of Elton that kind of prohibit us from possibly selling water and even possibly sewer in, and it's taken away our ability to grow maybe of, as a municipality. I believe that we, we, we gained their attention last night. Uh, I don't know how we move forward from here, but I think that there is a way, I think they listened, and I think that there's, uh, uh, going to be an opportunity for us to get in a room with them and, and sell our, sell our message. And, uh, uh, at least we got an opportunity, whatever that may be. The, uh, we started, uh, over the last week, uh, in fact, I met with Dan Hanley today with Public Works, starting to get preliminary numbers in regards to the budget. And I'm going to include every member of the, uh, town board, once we get to that next step, that we'll have them into the room. But I wanted them, uh, I wanted to, to meet with, with every department head and let them know what I feel my vision is for the next, uh, budgeting process. And it's very clear, I just want to make sure that every team member is bringing, uh, their plan for the next three to five years, and that's something we, we all need to see. And, uh, everything from you've been talking to, I spoke to Jimmy today, uh, our, our, our supervisor here on maintenance in the building, and, uh, I asked him what he thinks needs to be done on this building, because I don't think these are things that we've seriously addressed. We've always tried to react, uh, to issues. If an air conditioning goes down, you react to it, but if you see painting on the wall or rooms going down, we can plan on painting this room, whether it's this year, next year, or whatever.
It's very good that you asked Jimmy that, because I don't think, and you're right, we, we, we react, and here's an opportunity for somebody who actually works here to get some input on a building that they take care of.
We had, uh, uh, staff today sent out about the Maryland Municipal League Summer Convention, and that's going to be July twenty-eighth through July one. And, uh, I went ahead and, uh, spoke for the board and.
It's June.
And, and I said, yes, June twenty-eighth, I'm sorry, did I say the wrong date? June twenty-eighth to July first, and I went ahead and, uh, mentioned, just go ahead and book us all into Clarion, unless there's any objection, uh, to any of that.
I've, I've, uh, I've heard reasons, uh, I've been here for a while.
You don't want to be there?
Well, I, I've picked another place.
Oh, okay, very good. Very good. So, did you, good, did you make her aware of it?
I don't.
Very good. All right, fantastic. Uh, I wanted to know if the last day of the convention is on July first. July first happens to fall on a Wednesday, which would be our first meeting, uh, for the month of July. Uh, I think that, uh, what we could do, uh, instead of rushing to get back, and I think most people's going to, uh, I may actually end up staying a week, or maybe anyone else may stay in a week and they may not come back Wednesday. Uh, I would suggest that we make the second meeting in July, which is going to be our workshop, just make that a regular meeting. So we can advertise that to have the eighth of July, a regular meeting as well as July fifteenth, and then we, we meet our requirement by the town charter of having, uh, two meetings. Does that sound good to everybody?
Sounds all right.
And that way we keep it consistent on a Wednesday. Very good. Michelle, you got that?
Thank you.
Uh, let's see. Could we, uh, the, last week, I, I met with, uh, Walter Chakowski of Bowling Lane. Uh, Bowling Lane is, uh, inside the Thompson Estates neighborhood, and it's a, a road that is part of the, uh, county. Uh, he expressed interest of moving forward to annex into the town. Bowling Lane, uh, where his residence is, he is actually adjacent or, or is touching town property, so he could petition to annex in, uh, and he intends to. Uh, but I guess to be a little bit more on the proactive side, I feel as though that maybe we send a letter to everyone on Bowling Lane, uh, while we're doing this, and see if the folks on Bowling Lane want to move forward into an annexation into the town of Elton. Is that okay with the?
Did you, I, I thought I had heard many years ago, all of Thompson Estates was sent a letter. Were they, because I have had several people question that as well and want to come into the town.
Well, I know, I could.
They were, they were.
Yeah, I remember it was, uh, two thousand, and I was at, happened to be the mayor and at the time, and I know that, uh, one of the missions back then was to take all these little enclaves, the Holly Hall area, the Elkwood Estates, the rest of Thompson Estates, and anywhere where they're surrounded by town, they got these little islands, is let's see if they want to be part of the town. I was shocked that it failed the first time, uh, because we didn't really get any response back, I think is what it was, from the residents in those areas. And I think at that time, that we were putting a push, uh, our water and sewer rates weren't at the level that they're at today.
Right.
And, uh, I think that, uh, there's three hundred, it's a, it's, I think it's a total of three hundred homes that would be affected, that is, that's paying the out-of-town rate. I think that was the number on the, uh, workshop, or workshop number I saw. Uh, I'm a hundred percent for having, uh, those enclaves, and, and there's never any question about it, but how do we go forward in doing this again? Do we, do we move forward in sending the letters out to all those neighborhoods?
You need to send letters to all the property owners in all those developments, Holly Hall, Elkwood Estates, and, um, Thompson Estates, and explain to them, you know, the process of annexation, would they be for or against it? And I hope we get a good response, and we can give them a comparison of their rates, but that will, it'll take quite a bit of time.
Mm-hmm. As the town.
Yes.
I, you know, they came in here before, but I think we ought to, because I know many people would like to be in the town of Elton, I live there.
I do as well.
Let's move forward with that. That sounds good. Let's get all these enclaves, I'll, I'll introduce it, you can make your comment when we come back. Talking about letters, my, uh, mother-in-law lives at twenty-three Norman Allen Street, which is out of the town of Elton, in Holly Hall.
Right.
She received a letter today, and I should have brought it so I could have gave it to staff, but maybe someone, maybe this is a regular, it was from Tyco. The letter from Tyco stated, it had twenty, it didn't have her name, but it said twenty-three Norman Allen Street, Town of Elton, well number, what's the well behind, in Holly Hall?
Well, there's the well one R is what in, in, in operation right now, is behind the, across from this mall.
She received notice that the alarm went off. This Tyco letter was sent to her, and while she made the phone call, she's ninety-one years old, she made the phone call and wanted to know what it was a reference to, and they referred her to, uh, the security company. Is it ADT? I'll bring the letter in, maybe we can track this down a little bit, but my question.
Yeah, Tyco is ADT, yes.
Is, is, Stan, is this, has anyone ever heard of a letter going to, anyone in Holly Hall?
No, I am familiar with the well, well. I'm familiar with the well.
Did the alarm go off?
Yeah.
I wonder why they sent her, I wonder if they're sending everyone a letter in Holly Hall?
They probably made, they could have made a mistake, I don't know how they would have made.
They sent it to twenty, it says twenty, sent it to her, my mother-in-law, twenty-three Norman Allen, and I should, I failed to bring that in, but I will bring it in tomorrow, and, uh, maybe we can see what the heck that's all about.
I got it, I'll take it.
Very good. Uh, I know I'm dragging. I know I'm dragging on here a little bit tonight. Water and sewer study. We went ahead and tonight we voted, and we voted to lower the water rate by 11%. We received a quotation not to exceed $20,000 on a water and sewer study, and I think that these studies are only as good as the information we put in. And I feel comfortable to say that from looking at the previous study, there were six methods in place, and I think that the town board chose the right method. But I think if this board is looking at ever trying to lower the, if we want, if we want pay-as-you-use scenario with a slight fee, these are decisions that can only be made with a water and sewer study. I don't think that we can do any of this with that one. And I think that it would help us, guide us, if we had that information, if our intent is to lower the minimum or raise the minimum. I'm not so worried about the rate side of things, but we need those in that model. So, I'm okay with doing the water and sewer study, I know that, so I kind of want to know what the gut feeling is of the board, if we should, if we shouldn't. Give me some, give me some feedback. Yes?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes, I'd like, it'd be a guide for us, to give us some awareness or whatever.
Earl?
Mary Jo?
Do I have a motion to move forward with the water and sewer study with, what's the name of the organization?
Municipal Financial.
Not to exceed $20,000, and we would take that money out of the water fund, is water and sewer fund, we'd take 10 and 10. Very good. We got a motion and a second, any other discussion?
Yeah, what was the last fee that cost us?
I think it was about $20,000.
Same figure. Okay, no problem.
It did say, though, attending meetings was $1,400 on that.
Well, that $20,000.
Is that including?
I'm sorry?
It has the two meetings.
There are two meetings, but if you, if you, you know, request, have it looked at different ways.
Yeah, so I want us to be careful when we meet, to make sure we have all the information we need.
Exactly.
Right, so they don't have to keep coming back.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, I got one last thing, two last things. One, and I go back to our box that's outside, our drug box that we're collecting prescription drugs, and I think last month alone, we collected, how many pounds, 200?
Since April last year, 267 pounds.
Up to year-to-date, or just that one month?
No, from April through December. About 40 pounds a month, but they're 40.
About 40 pounds a month of prescription drug. And when this was built, I kind of chuckled about it when I saw it in the paper, and I didn't take it very seriously. Quite frankly, it is a serious thing, and I have to give kudos, that it's been a very successful to get drugs off the, it has to be a volunteer project of it, but it is taking it out of the medicine cabinets, it's taking it out where maybe where the grandchild can't get into that cabinet and take it from grandma. I think it's an important step, it's working, we're collecting. I continue to say I'd like to take it a step further, and that step further would be going, we talked a little bit about the video monitor, doing the tape of, the ongoing loop tape of drug awareness. And I mentioned this at the last meeting, it'll, it would involve having our chief give a message, it would be talking, Louis would be giving the message, talking about how it's important to give it here, not putting it into the toilets, which affect our treatment of water. There's, we would be able to give a great message, and we got a price of $800 to make that happen. And I'd like to ask the board to allow us to move forward to get this videotape done for $800. We would take the money out of, I'd have to get a budget amendment, we'd have to take it out of the drug, the seized drug fund money. And currently, we have, let's see, the seized funds, we have, currently have $129,000 of seized money that we have taken from.
You have to use the forfeit.
Forfeit.
Oh. Seized is not our money.
It's first seized, then it's forfeited.
All right. $68,000.
$68,000 that belongs to us today, and I'd like to ask the town to allow us to spend $800 to move forward with this looping tape monitor, and let's get this thing done. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion, do I have a second? And a second, any discussion?
Yeah, I like to abstain from that, because the contractor uses relative of mine, so.
Very good, no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. And lastly, appointments to the Ethics Committee. At the last meeting, we extended it a couple more weeks, and I, and we didn't get any additional resumes. We extended the board from three to five members. I hope that we don't have to ever meet again, from the Ethics Board perspective. There's one person on the, we have about five or six. There's one member that I'd like to move forward with, and let's leave one position open for another couple weeks, see if we get any more applications. But I'd like to make a motion to accept Danny D. Martinez. Dan is a member of the Rotary Club, he's moved here about six, seven, eight years ago. He was involved in the BRAC movement, he lives in Patriots Glen. We all received his application, I think he's a stand-up individual, I actually saw him at Cecil Night in Annapolis, and seems like everything that I can see is, he's an upstanding citizen of the town of Elton. Do we have a second to support him?
Second.
Any discussion on Dan? Harry Dunn, all in favor? All right. Very good. And we'll leave the other position open for another couple weeks and see if we get any more applications. Very good. I think I addressed everything that I needed to address. Mary Jo, you're on.
I first wanted to thank Commissioner Gibbons for putting on the celebration for, the 25th Annual Celebration for Martin Luther King. It's always wonderful, but I got there a little early this year, and it's, there's a lot that goes on for volunteering for that day, and to see the volunteers, and I want to commend you and your family, because I think every member of his family was there early, cooking and setting up, and that was very nice to say, so thank you.
Thanks.
I'd like us, I know we're going to be starting budgets, but in the future, and well, this could be with budgets. The City of Haverty Grace has a program, it's called the RAD Program, it's Revitalization and Development Revolving Loan Fund, and it's very successful. One of our local bankers here now runs the program for Haverty Grace, I think I've mentioned it to a couple of you, but I would like in the future, perhaps we can invite him here and have him talk to us about it, to see how it works. They have 11 active and outstanding loans right now, but they initially received their funding from CDBG, so they're using funds from the stink to put back into the community, so I'd really like us to look into that. And the other thing with things happening downtown the way they are, sidewalk cafes, we, I brought this up several years ago, and we really didn't get into it that much, but perhaps we could just take a little time, look at the permits, see if there's something we want to change to make this better for people, so more people will take advantage of it. And that's all I have.
Very good. Mr. Potter?
I just want to start by comment that Mr. Lemon made, as far as bringing us up to date on things that we start, and one good thing that came to mind was, we start it, but we don't finish it, so I'd like to thank Ms. Lemon for bringing that, so we can stay on top of that. And see, he will keep you straight, that's one thing. So, I remember we talked about Employee of the Month, or what we was going to do for the town of Elton, I'd like to address that a little bit, the Employee of the Month. We're really looking at, the Human Resource Department is developing employment of the Quarter Program for the town of Elton. Human Resources, researching types of programs recommended for the offer by the other government entities incorporated by practice, and see what they're doing in order to put this in place. So, we're looking at doing a quarterly thing for the employees. And the purpose for the program, the purpose is to be designed to recognize town of Elton employees who demonstrate outstanding accomplishment and amplify exceptional public service by contributing above and beyond the scope of regular job responsibilities and requirements. Effective date is, purpose, effective date is the first quarter in 2015, with first awards being issued April of 2015, pending finalization and approval of the program. Subsequent awards will be issued the month following the end of each quarter. The policy, the term of the policy will be documented in the employee recognition policy to record the Employee of the Quarter Program, specific objectives, nomination process, eligibility, selection criteria, selection committee type of recognition awards, and avenues of communication, program announcements, and nomination forms. Once the program is finalized, program guidelines and nomination form will be communicated to all town of Elton employees and posted on the website. And I think we will do something also, maybe post something in addition at one of the main entries, like at the Clarion. Award winners will be recognized both internally and on the town website, which is at that. So, that, Mr. Lemon, is a follow-up for the Employee of the Quarter, okay? That's one. Now, I really feel honored to be able to be a part of a group, I like the idea of each commissioner being a head of one of the departments, and I have the privilege of the Parks and Rec. One of the things, I say I, don't mind we, because we're all going to be involved once we get the logistics down. I'm looking forward to having our first Mayor and Commissioner Golf Tournament. We always go out and raise money for our events, and I thought it would be good to take and do a golf tournament and raise money for the Parks and Rec Department, so they can use the funds, whatever way they need, that they need to, to help create a little bit more equipment and stuff for the kids. So, we do have a date set for that, and I will bring that the next time, because I didn't write that down. But I am also working on, we, a basketball tournament through the Mayor and Commissioners, because right now, I'm in a program for the county that have teams all across the county that's playing for the middle school, and I always see that the middle school doesn't have the same opportunity as the high school, so here's an opportunity for the Mayor and Commissioners to reach out and do something, and I'm even trying to include the Elton Christian Middle School, I've talked to the coach there, and I'm already scheduled up some games with, that I'm already holding up to middle school, which is starting February the 3rd, and I'll give you some more insight on that. But even though we're using county and town programs, I'm mashing them all together and trying to make a Mayor and Commissioner Committee Tournament, all of that, because the players are there, it's just, all I need is the facility. And so, I think through the Elton Middle School and Elton Christian, we can have either March the 6th, 7th, 8th, maybe a Saturday, an all-day tournament running through two schools nearby. So, I've already had the conversation with the coach about that, just the logistics and run it by everybody, and I know everybody here on the board has some sport background. Rob Aldy, in 2007, he led the national championship team, Cecil, with a speech of his, I know he can give a speech to the middle school, I'll destroy that act there. Gibbons with the background he has, and I know DJ has some skills. If not that, we can use him for baseball, I know he is a baseball player. Mary Jo, you have to stick with Jerry.
I'll be the announcer.
So, anyway, make that story a little shorter. It's a lot of excitement going on, because at least they're looking that someone's reaching out to help out with them. And I think the last thing I want to talk about is, right now, we're dealing with the Parks and Rec Basketball Little League, and if you know anybody out there that wants to either come and do some refereeing at, like at Thompson State, or Gilpin Manor when they have their games in the evening, the Parks and Rec is looking for someone to, like a teenager or something, maybe make $10 for refereeing, a little side job, so that's something that will help keep a kid out of trouble, if they have knowledge of. So, that's it for me.
Very good. I actually thought that you were going to challenge the other municipalities in a five-person basketball game. I think we should take them. I think that we could do it. Commissioner Dave Rynen, you're on.
Yes, sir.
That's the point, I was talking to somebody in Hockley County, and they have a rec center over, it's always great to have a new facility, and they, so they have kids in there from 8:00 in the morning until 10:00 on Saturdays and Sundays, that's, continues, doing whatever, ever, ever. Louis, when you get the pictures from the state, do they send those to you, or you acquire them from certain places like the government, or the U.K. government?
I'm sorry?
The photographs of Hogan and his.
Where do you get them from?
We'll contact the governor's office, because they'll have a portrait, official portrait done, and then we'll ask, that's how we got Governor O'Malley and Vice, and Lieutenant Governor Brown's portraits, and then we get them framed and everything, they send them to the picture. But they'll have an official portrait out soon.
Right. Just a little side note here, Mr. Lemon, I don't know if you heard from Elton High School or not, but certainly the 23rd or so is one half of the school year, the second semester begins in February, and maybe somebody contacted you with the history that you asked for. Follow me, did you hear what I said?
I missed that. We're back on the school.
The 23rd of January is the end of the first semester of two county public schools, and I thought someone was going to get in contact with you at Elton High School, because I know they said if they were going to do anything as far as providing some governmental issues into their curriculum, it would be in the second semester.
Okay.
Okay, so that's beginning.
Well, sure, I'll be happy to contact the school if that's something you'd like me to do.
Yeah, Tom Robbs, because he said he had one of his staff members committed to see you or make an effort.
Charlie, I think.
Part of that, part of that idea was that some people here in this room would, either on this side or up in the council, would go up and explain how the government works and stuff like that, and show some PowerPoints and different things, like the police chief.
Yeah, we actually.
Charlie over here had a wonderful PowerPoint presentation, that kind of thing.
Yeah, I think we actually, we had, we moved forward on that, didn't you contact?
I was waiting for the semester, and what I'd done was, when Mr. Lemon brought it up, I had the email information, and I've got it in my calendar to contact the gentleman from the school.
Okay, perfect.
So, what's going to happen, are you going to do it, or?
We got it.
So, okay.
And Chief, you want to just take us through basically those things that are necessary or that a recruit goes through to be a policeman, like, I've written things down of what they are, you can change door, application, polygraph, physical training, and what have you. The nut person initially signs with you, what do they go through?
If they're not a certified police officer, they got to do a written exam. Provided they pass the written exam, they move on to a physical agility exam. They pass the physical agility exam, they move on to an oral review board of Elton Police Officers. They pass that, they then move on to a extensive background investigation. If they complete the background investigation and. If they complete the background investigation and, uh, we accept them for further processing, they go through a polygraph exam, psychological exam, physical exam, drug screen.
The polygraph entails what? Even though I think we know, but just to hear from you.
You get hooked up to the machine, it's, uh, it, it's in conjunction with the information you provide in your background exam and your, uh, background booklet and other, uh, questions that are man- mandated by the Maryland Police Training Commission.
And the reason why it's that question, I know the county sheriff department had a representative Martin Luther King program, and he said that he had all of these recruits, but the majority of them failed the polygraph.
Yes.
So, once you fail that, you're done. There's no, there's, there's no coming back?
No.
Are all the questions the same on the polygraph? Does everyone, or...
They're, they're, they're related to the information that the, the person gives to, uh, the police department, and this, this state police, it's other, right?
Yeah, we generally use, uh, Maryland State Police.
So, everybody's different. Now, they'll ask questions about your background, every individual will, they'll, they'll ask questions in the background investigation, and then during the polygraph, they ask you if they're truthful.
Yeah.
That's the whole point, so everybody's completely...
What's a random question that they use in, I mean, for...
Well, there is one question, they said if you pulled over the magger. The, uh, real quickly, we had, how many, how many applicants went through this last process, and how many do we have that made it through all these cycles?
Uh, we had a little over twenty that took the exam, and we were left after our oral review board, uh, which took place last week. Uh, we were left with eight.
Very good, really, right?
Yeah.
Is that a good, that's a good...
That's good. That's good. And, uh, they're all going to fill out a background investigation booklet and will, uh, move forward from there with, with their processing.
So, they prepare for the polygraph?
No, the polygraph doesn't come till the end.
What is the, uh, what's the average cost from, from soup and nuts of, of...
That's what, that's what, that's what question I had.
From, from, and I know man hours is, is hard too.
It's, it's man hours, uh, you're talking a hundred bucks for a psychological exam, probably the same for the, uh, physical exam, and polygraph, uh, we typically don't get charged for.
But as far as the man hours, do we have a general cost, a liquid cost from, from interview, first contact to, to now, he, he's got one of our badges and one of our guns, and he's, he's actually patrolling our streets?
Uh, man hours, I'm gonna say you're looking at probably close to eighty hours, roughly.
So, you're talking with equipment, everything else, it would be safe to say somewhere around fifteen thousand for that individual?
Uh, well, that, yeah, if, if you wanna include, uh, their training, uniforms...
Yes, perfectly, I would include that, yeah.
Yeah, you're probably looking at that.
Am I late, am I late on that number?
No, you, you know, I, no, I, I think you're in a ballpark. I, I could sit down, take the, take the clerk to look at, because there's no, uh, there's no set fee for training academies.
Right.
Uh, sometimes we're very fortunate and we're able to get them for free, other times we gotta pay. And they range in cost from fifteen hundred on up to about three thousand and thirty-five hundred bucks.
Okay.
Chief, I have a question. Do all police, uh, companies do it this way and leave the polygraph for the end?
Uh, it, as far as I know.
Because I was, if, if the polygraph was maybe after the physical exam and they fail, you don't spend all that time, but I guess you need all that information and the background to do the polygraph.
We need the information, and it also has to do with, uh, being able to make the, you know...
Right.
...conditional offer of employment.
Gotcha, okay.
We, we've tried it different ways, and this is the best way for us to do it.
My last question is, so, if you have someone in the department, they either resign or they get discharged or, or they leave, and they have a weapon, what do you do with the weapon that they had been assigned to? Is that reused, uh, or, or...
Uh, we, we physically get it back from them, obviously, and then it's, uh, placed back into our armory and, uh, yeah, it'll be reused. It'll be reissued.
And then, see, Robbie, you're talking about earlier, bringing nuts and that, you ought to have a buyback gun program put out there to give them a hundred bucks.
That could work.
I'm dying.
Oh, what's, what's the average life of time that one of us officers stayed with us?
Well, right now, we're in a really good spot, because most of our people are, uh, here for, for the long haul. We have, we've, we've hired, uh, we've had two people leave in the past year that's just kinda up and left, they wanted to go someplace else. Uh, one went to another police department, the other changed a life and decided he didn't wanna be in police work.
And then just got that hour retired.
Yeah, we had a retirement, um, yeah, and then actually a fourth person also left for personal reasons, so, uh, but really, the bulk of the police force right now is, as far as I know, is here until they retire, or here from...
Ten years.
From hired to retire, and that, and that's the goal.
Absolutely.
Hey, while we had the pension plan, are the police officers stated that the pension plan would be a good recruitment enticement? Do you still feel as though that pension plan...
Oh, yeah.
...had some advantage that other police departments don't have?
Sure, especially, uh, th- this day and age, uh, 'cause I don't think that they're being, uh, offered new any longer. Uh, some, some of your larger agencies are putting their folks in, uh, 401Ks, 401As, et cetera. So, the fine benefits certainly and attraction.
Okay.
And, and recruits ask about it. Recruits ask about, uh, pension plan and take home car availability.
The, uh, I wanna start off with the, thank Commissioner Gibbons and the Methodist Church for the invite to the Martin Luther King Celebration.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I grew up in a Methodist church, um, but, uh, we never celebrated anything like that. That was, uh, that was moving. Uh, I, I sincerely mean that, it was, it was moving. And I hope to be invited for the rest of my life, actually. Absolutely. The, uh, talking about, um, going back to, I think it was the last meeting about snow removal, and I can't remember who had talked about it, and it's snowing outside, and we have a, a policy in place that it's forty-eight hours, correct? I, I'd like to change that, uh, quickly, if we can, and I don't know how, I mean, government and quick typically don't go together.
Make a motion.
Can, can I do that tonight?
Yes.
Yes, of course.
Well, if he, if he, if he wants to move forward, right...
I, I'd like to discuss it real quick, because I, I don't wanna make it unfair to, to somebody if it, if it snows on, on, if snow stops on Saturday night and they can't get back to, to the place until Monday, then, you know, it's twenty-four hours, uh, out of the question. I know Northeast does ten hours. You know, I, I, I think that that's, that's, that's a little quick. Do we make it twelve hours? I don't care what it is, but forty-eight hours is way too long. Uh, and then the people that have abandoned their, their properties, uh, what do we do if they don't do it? If they don't clean it off? Then DPW goes out and we build in? So, I think there's more to it than just saying, okay, this is the timeframe. I, I think that there's, there's a little bit of discussion that's needed here.
So, you wanna discuss that, Gordon?
Yeah. Can we do it tonight, or you put it on a workshop?
Uh, we can put it on a workshop, but I agree with you, I think we could drop that down to twelve hours, but the, the, uh, how do we get the absentee landlords who, or, or the vacant buildings right now, how do we handle that in, in busy traffic areas? But we even take it a step further into, uh, uh, the neighborhoods, I mean, the walking, the walking zones, or, I think it needs some discussion, but I, I'm with you a hundred percent on this, I think that if you could put it on the...
Yeah, when you put the twelve hours, we're gonna look, what's the start time, the start time, the finish time?
Right. Yeah, when it, once it stops snowing.
So, I'm gonna look at that a lot there.
Yeah. All right.
But also the notice, too. I apologize for not getting, but also the notice, because that's a bigger deal, too, four to the hours for how are you notified?
Yeah. Okay.
I think...
All right, let's talk about it on the workshop then.
Let's get that on, uh, uh, the next workshop, if we could.
Uh, with the, with, uh, uh, an election next year coming up, I know when, when I was running, I was talking about, again, changing the date of the election. I don't wanna wait until September, October, November, and all of a sudden do it again. If we're gonna do something, I'd rather do it, uh, within the next couple of months, or we can table it until the following year, too. It, it doesn't matter to me, I just don't wanna wait to the last second, so I, I definitely wanna put that on everybody's radar to make sure that's...
John, where do we stand with the election law information?
Have two sections remaining, all of the balance is done. You all have met Jill in my office. I anticipate she will not be coming to the office tomorrow because of the potential weather. She deserves everything. Send home that package with her to clean up in, in the U. Today's Wednesday. I anticipate next week we will be able to start sending you a chapter at a time. For review and comments.
So, I would say if we change the date, that won't affect you any at all, that would just be plugged in.
Yeah.
Michelle, let's put that on the, uh, next workshop for topics, I think.
Correct.
I, I agree, we gotta get that worked out.
Yeah, we've already talked to the election board. Oh, that's already...
Right. Uh, Steve, with the thirteen fourteen budget, where do we stand as far as the finalization on that?
We're just started reviewing that for, like, the, the financials.
So, another fourteen days, another thirty days?
Well, it'll be issued probably in February, but we'll, uh, there'll be a lot of back and forth with the auditors and the...
Does it, does it typically take that long?
That's what it took last year. A lot of issues come up, then certainly a couple people, only two of us working on it, and that's all the issues come up, you can check out with as, as they come up with.
Okay.
So, that's when they were issued last year.
And with, with your budget, does it come with a analysis of, I, I know there was a not, uh, we didn't hire a lot of different people, so salaries were, were, uh, were not paid because of that. So, when there's huge, uh, discrepancies between budgeted money and then unspent, there is an account or a reason for those, uh, in a, a report that's given to us, right?
Well, part of this thing is to schedule a budget to actual, have a bridge of budget to funnel budget for its category expenditure, then the actual expenditure, then...
No, I get, I get what you're saying, I get what you're saying with that. I mean, it's, it's a lot like this one where we have miscellaneous revenues, we, for some reason, we're seventy-five thousand dollars ahead of what we expected, but there's no, there's no reason for that.
Right.
So, when we, when I, when we get the budget and look at it saying, okay, and looking at the next budget, okay, we didn't spend this, we, we did spend this, we overspent here, and we didn't spend here, there's reasons for it, so this way we can dissect it more.
Well, uh, the part of the comprehensive annual financial report, including the financial segments, are, is a management discussion analysis, which touches base on, you know, pay, the balances like that, and in addition to how the schedule actually presents the balances.
Okay. The, staying on the theme of the budget, um, I know, or I looked at personnel here, the, uh, man, which page is it on? Personnel, on the, uh, general fund expenditures, I have, uh, four hundred and twenty-five thousand that would be paid out, uh, budget, uh, that number's probably gonna be a little bit wrong, uh, two hundred and twelve, a little over four hundred thousand. When it's personnel, is, is that salaries?
Is this, this report they're discussing...
Yes.
That's the whole department. There's not line items, but here, there's just departmental totals. So, that would be their salaries, their fringe benefits, their supplies, and the equipment they may have in their budget. That's the bottom line for that department.
For personnel?
That's correct.
Who is personnel?
Human Resources, HR.
Is that it?
Well, there's, there were two people there.
Right, now there's one. I can count.
Had to be done contractually, but then there are, you know, all expenses that come out of that.
No, I get that, but I know that, uh, out of the sewage fund and the, and the water fund, we have salaries...
This is just the general fund piece.
I know.
So, the department in total is...
Sir, I know.
Greater than just the general fund?
What I'm trying to find out by just looking at this, and, uh, by just looking at this, is find out how much in salaries is coming out of the general fund compared to the water sewage fund, that's all.
Right, okay, we, I keep rebar notes for the budget, that's, that's not, is not presented here.
Fair enough. Could you email that to me?
Sure.
Thank you. The, Dan...
Steve emailed that to everybody.
It's just for HR, the breakdown, between the three funds.
No, no, I know that there's seven, seven hundred and five thousand to the water fund, there's seven hundred and eight thousand, eighty-eight thousand coming out of the sewage fund for personnel salaries.
Right.
I wanna know what other salaries is, uh, what funds are paying for the other salaries. I wanna know that, the totality of, of salaries, where it's all being paid from. That's what I wanna know.
Total salaries...
Uh, total salaries and the fringe benefits across the board.
Payroll reimbursement, is that what you...
Say again?
Payroll reimbursement, is that what you're looking at?
Yes.
That's on here?
No, I was just looking at this one right now.
Breakdown sheet.
No, not on the breakdown sheet, 'cause we have payroll reimbursement for water fund, which is eighteen thousand, four seventy-five, eleven. Payroll reimbursement for sewer fund, twenty-four thousand, five eighty-nine, forty-three. And then payroll dispersants, there's two hundred and fifty-five thousand, four sixty-four, twenty-nine.
Right, it's not a total, though, I'm looking for the total.
I'm sorry, you're reading for the financial report.
Right.
Yeah, it's just that period of the financial report.
Yeah, I went, I went the whole thing.
The whole year.
'Cause the whole year for, for water is seven hundred and five thousand, right around that, and it's seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand for sewage fund.
You wanted the general fund consolidated.
I do, yes, sir. That's, that's what I'm looking for. Thank you. Uh, Dan, chapel run, there's trees being cut and trapple run, and I know that the HOA was notified that they need to trim 'em up. But I noticed today, first day I noticed it, was that, uh, DPW was cutting trees.
Oh, trimming them.
Trimming, yeah, trimming them, not cutting them down, trimming them. Isn't, isn't that the HOA's responsibility?
The street trees, they're located between the sidewalk and the streets, they're lined.
Okay.
And there were all the lines yesterday.
There were what?
The trees were aligned along the street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, all the branches and, no, I, yeah, I know that they were getting, uh, annexation of the donut holes, as I call them, uh, around the Town of Elkton, I'd also like, uh, I definitely agree that it needs to be done. I'd also like to, to know if there's a generic cost analysis for services, uh, provided to, uh, uh, each house, uh, along with the revenue side. Each house, I'm assuming, would have some type of cost associated with it for services, such as the police and, and, uh, just general services. Do we have, uh, do we have something like that?
You have to take the total cost of the police department's operation...
Right.
...and divide by the number of, of properties that are served by the police.
Well, not just, not just the, the police department, but would be all expenditures for services.
Totally, totally, all your expenses for, uh, for the whole town, the whole budget, divided by the number of properties, that's the only thing you could do. We wouldn't know how much each individual property would cost unless it'd be very, very generic. I mean, you know, some people never own boxes, other people, they live there, I mean, you know.
Are you looking for a comparison?
Uh, the cost versus revenue, yeah. That's what I'm looking for, is, is make sure it's...
Maybe, may, uh, well, I, I don't know if I'm hearing you right, but I, I was thinking, and I think that when we, when we send out for that, asking them for the annexation, I think generically we could put that the out-of-town rate is this...
For water and sewer.
Yeah, the in-town rate is this. If your property value was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, this is, this is what your tax would be.
At our rate.
And, and then our rate, and then show where it would either be a savings or...
No, that's not what I'm asking.
That's not what you're asking.
That's not what I'm asking. I, I, no, that's my next, that was my next thing.
He's asking the cost to service that house, that property.
How much does it cost to service that house? I mean, it's just like, it's just like any development that comes in, it's, you're, you're gonna have a cost for that development to the town. I know the taxes get, get divvied out, I know, I know that there's, uh, water, sewage, everything else, now you're dispersing the, the, the collective, uh, expenditures that we have here, I just figured that there was some formula that the town already used to, I just figured that there was some formula that the town already used to figure that out.
Yeah, I think the police in the past, and correct me if I'm wrong, to know how many police officers per the population that's in the town is what, I know we've seen a scale of, you know, you have six thousand people, you need forty police officers or something like that. So that's kind of what you go by.
Well, yeah, you would take public works.
So public works, I wouldn't know, but I see what you're saying, all the departments and.
Just to see, I thought that there was already a household, I really did. I'm sorry.
Well, one of the curious things about, we have to consider here is that we have to deal with the county government because, for example, if you annexed in all the properties in Holly Hall and Elkhorn State, for example, those are county roads.
Right.
So we have to have the county convey all those streets. We already have control over the distribution and collection system because you own it.
Right.
But the actual streets of the maintenance of those streets and any stormwater and anything that would be the town's responsibility at that point.
Correct.
I don't, I've never had a scenario where we've taken a subdivision into the town of Elkton and then had the county convey all the county's rights to their property to the town. So it would be a kind of a novel experience. But you have to consider that because you'd have all these theoretically you'd be in town and.
Planted them, right?
Those automatically become ours because they're owned and maintained by the county.
What about the subterranean stuff, meaning the sewage pipes, the water pipes?
We are doing all those.
Okay. All right, so anything that would be.
We bought the Holly Hall system in the sixties and maintain it ever since then.
Okay, so anything above ground would be us. And then the cost of that. And again, I want to bring these donut holes. Exactly. But again, I want to make a decision based upon what's it going to cost the town to do this and make sure that it's good not just for them, but for us. That's all. So I got nowhere on that. Because we don't have a formula, right?
There is, not that I'm aware of, there is. We've never, I've never done that in the last twenty-something years.
Somebody.
And I was just trying.
What about MML? Would MML have any insight on it?
Cost per house, we can ask, but the cost, the average cost per.
House, toll for a municipality service.
I just took the twelve million dollar budget and divided it by six thousand homes.
That's what I was thinking. That worked in the pants.
It came to two thousand dollars a home, and we know it doesn't cost two thousand dollars per home to service.
Wow.
Well, you've got to keep in mind too, if you annexed, let's say, a hundred and fifty properties, two hundred properties, whatever, might be more than that.
Three hundreds.
Then you have to service that property, the sheriff's office no longer services it. It would be the police department's responsibility to patrol and service that. So that would add to their population to serve.
And not just that, but you have track, or not trash pickup, but grass clippings that we'd have to go pick up. I mean, there's so many other things involved in that, and that's why we're just trying to figure. Yes, grass clipping or bags or aliens beam them up at night. But I was just looking for some type of cost analysis, that's all. And sitting at the county last night, I was disheartened by a couple of things. And I really hope that the town, I know that Perryville and Elkton and Northeast, I think, made a good showing and collectively came together. I'd like to see something as far as the towns come together and be proactive with the county and sitting down and saying, hey, this is what we're going to do. This is what we have planned now, ten years from now. And as Rob had talked about even further than that at times because we can't allow the boxing in that's taking place and the opportunities that Elkton should have that the county. Now, that being said, I also agree that the county needs to move forward with or without us. And if we're not engaged with them as they said last night, then they're going to move forward without us. But I think there was a good showing in unison by at least three towns of we are all about sitting down and talking about this.
I think a good thing would be to invite the county to our MML meetings. And you'll have all the towns that represent and issues that we can bring to the table. County needs to be a part of us as well as we a part of them.
Absolutely.
So MML would be a good time to have them sit in either Perryville, Ride and Sun, Elkton.
When do we host a meeting? When's our next, any idea when we host the?
We're not.
It's for a while.
Yeah.
We can contact the Cecil Hartford chapter secretary and make the suggestion.
Yeah, that would be, I think that'd be a great suggestion.
Okay.
Next one is in Cecil County.
We'll take it over.
The last thing, the last thing to talk about the sidewalk cafes along with Comcast channel, along with Park and Rec, and IT department, and tying all of it into, in this next budget, some type of EDC, Economic Development or Business Development Center, I think is strongly needed. And we do, we talk, Mr. Lemon has talked about it a few times about, we talk about a lot of different things, but keeping it tied together is almost like herding cats sometimes. And we really need to have, in my opinion, a laser beam focus on what we're going to do, where we're going to go and start getting it done. And it, just a quick, seriously, sixty-second story is, I was convinced to download a game. It's Boom Beach. I don't know if you've seen it on TV where the little characters get blown up and caught on fire by flamethrowers and stuff like that. So I downloaded it and it's very interactive and it's fun to play. But I couldn't get past this particular part. And I was talking to my finance manager today and I kid you not, a twelve-year-old said, well, that's easy. Go on YouTube and you look at this. And he showed me how I can go in my own phone into all of the data and copy and paste and change things around to turn these particular individuals into tanks. And as he's doing this, I was in awe that I consider myself a fairly intelligent person, but the technology is passing me. And with the way that we can disseminate information nowadays, we really need to get involved and get our citizens involved in what we're doing. Rob and I talked to a gentleman this morning that was unaware that we were talking about the water and rate study and doing a decrease of the water. He was unaware of it, that we were doing it tonight. And see, but the problem is, you say that, and I agree with you. The website, there's so much going on, we need somebody that's dedicated to it, that pulls the alliance into it, that pulls Park and, because Park and Rec has their own website or their own Facebook page and stuff. So does the Alliance. And it's just, all these pieces of the pie, we need to pull together. And the "We Are Elkton" chant, I think, could be screamed at that particular time, especially with a dedicated IT department, which I think in the long run would be a revenue source also because then there would be hats or there'd be mugs or there'd be, now you're talking about not just the color vibe, you know, then you do a Spartan race or you do a pet thing. There's so many different things that we could do, but it wouldn't be pieced together. So I'd encourage the board to strongly think about that with the budget coming up. And I know Rob, Rob's been involved and on board with that. That's all I have.
Sure, good, thank you. A couple of quick things that came up as everyone was talking, I know we're wanting to move on, but. Chief, we, with your help, we acquired a speed sign for Oban Moore Pike Main Street.
Yes.
A solar-powered sign. We, any, when we getting that up?
Well, I know we received it and I think, and I don't want to dump it on the lowest, but I know he's had some back and forth emails with State Highway and I think we're still working out some logistics.
The KCIs is on the foundation plan, but we need to find out where the State Highway right-of-way is. And KCI contacted State Highway and they have to get into their archives and send the information back. And then once we get the information back, KCI is going to send a survey team out there to make sure where the right-of-way line is. There wasn't an actual poll, we actually got to put a sign, a sign. The sign is out there, it's attached to, it actually has to be on a, a post on a sign. Very good. And I just. It's complicated. I know it is, I know it is. The municipal road is, you don't. I know. You went on State Highway. I think it's going to be a powerful sign. It's going to be, people will come down that hill, it's going to blink, it's going to shine, it's going to tell them to slow down. I think it's going to be a powerful sign for people entering into the town.
They already have it.
I know, we got it.
We got it.
We got it. It's just, we're just waiting on it. I wanted to touch base with the board, go along with the message of the budget, and I would like to formally ask the board when we start to meet. I'd like to meet with us once again in that workshop as individuals. And give me that two- to five-year plan, what your wish lists are. And let's put all that into the plan together. And DJ mentioned a bad word to me was grass clippings. And I wanted to just prepare the board. And I know this will be very controversial for the group here, maybe not. But my direction is to, after looking at the price quotes that we received from Waste Management, how much time I think it costs us, how we can't stay on top of the grass clippings because of weather, how the grass clippings themselves endanger this, you know, the INI and the storm drains, and we have to meet the requirement here in the near future. My view, grass clippings is going to be gone. And I want to kind of bring that out there and I hope that we get some public input on those grass clippings because that's going to be something that I can, I feel extremely comfortable. That's one thing I'd like to move forward in the next year's budget that we'll eliminate. I know I may not get support for that, so I just wanted to.
Tell everyone now, if you have to buy a new lawnmower, get one with a mulcher.
Get the mulcher. So that was my last few items. And I wanted to also mention, I know we have a few guests here tonight, and I didn't officially, I mentioned Sam and I didn't even get Sam's last name.
Lou Misi.
All right, easy for you to say. Sam is our newest person from Cecil Wig and really appreciate you coming to our meetings. It's been a long time. I think Jacob was here for a few meetings and glad to have you on board with us.
Welcome to the air.
Glad to report on Elkton, all in a positive light. We had, and for the rest of the folks in the audience, we had scheduled a six o'clock meeting to meet with Standard Solar. And we couldn't really meet with them because we have to meet with our attorney first to do a closed session on some contractual issues. We never closed the meeting yet, but we're going to go ahead and, we're going to finish this meeting and then we're going to close our meeting and then we'll move forward. But right now's the time that I'd like to open up the floor. Mr. Littenberg.
Well, I was going to ask when I raised my hand before, because I was under the assumption it was a workshop, but didn't realize you were having your six o'clock meeting.
Yes.
But anyhow, as you discussed with the mayor of Northeast about what the Public Utilities Commission told them about out-of-town water rates and so forth.
Yes.
Which was a lot higher than what you're charging in the town of Northeast. Maybe when you send your letter to the Thompson Estates or Elkhorn Estates, whatever they may be, state in there that this is what the recommendation was from the Public Utilities Commission, and the rates that you're getting here is a lot cheaper than what they recommended, you know, in the form letter that you sent to them, just a suggestion. What's the policy on camping in the parks? Has that changed somewhat?
Wow, that's a good one. I didn't know we were camping in.
Well, if you're camping again in Marina Park, as you go down Route Forty, look to the right and you'll see a red tent.
Very good, well.
I mean, if it, we can have a coffee in the mornings and I, you know how I invent different things. I said, I'd like to go out sometime and throw a tent up and camp and see how long it would take you guys to come to get me.
Yes.
It wouldn't be long.
Dan, were you aware of that? Or police, police chief, were you aware of that?
No.
We have to post it first before we remove it. Kevin?
It's not posted?
No, no. If you go to the campsite, you have to post it, that they have to remove it within, what, forty-eight hours?
If we.
And then if they don't, then we can confiscate it, we have to hold it. And then they want to claim it, they can get it. We've been through this with the ACLU.
I remember. Sorry about that.
And all the signs in front of your parks, it all states that there's no admission between.
Dusk and dawn.
And daylight.
Dusk and dawn.
These people are in violation of doing that. I don't, I mean, you have to do what you have to do with posting things and so forth, but it's.
I would agree with that and I would say this, and I know that we went through, we walk on eggshells when it comes to people camping into our town parks. But I'd like to address it. Let's move forward on this and see what the action we can take and can't take. And if it's posted, we go down there and we ask them to leave, they're in violation, and let's see what we can do. I know that most of the board, I know there's been experience here, what we can do and can't do. But I believe that it's already posted. We can ask them to leave and I think that we can take a little bit quicker route than we did in the past because it is posted. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
John, what do you think?
I think it's a little bit more complicated. I think we have some limitations on prior order orders and things such as that. We've had a policy in place that's been approved and meets the requirements of the prior order. But probably everybody should read that first in the context of that conversation. I do think that there are some things that can be done.
One of the things that stands out to me is if someone were to put a tent in front of my house, on my property, I wouldn't want to wait until forty-eight hours to have to move it.
Oh, you don't have to, that's your call.
I'm just saying. So the same thing is town property of Elkton, town property, that's town property.
It's public.
What's the difference?
Sorry, there is a big difference.
Okay, well, I'm just saying that, yeah, but I just say that we shouldn't have, I understand the statistics behind it, but the ACLU doesn't run the town of Elkton.
The federal district court is the one that issued it, not ACLU.
Well, I think every time we bring this up.
We're on it and let's stay on it. Mr. Littenberg, you had something else?
Just that, with the chief of police, I talked to him several months, oh, it's been a couple of years ago, about what they do in Northeast with the same situation. Said if it's on private property, they've got a form under, they take it to the property owner. Property owner signs it and he says, within two days, they're out of there. That's what they do in Northeast. Now, whether they're high leaning or low or not, but evidently it works. Have you sent a letter or any response from the city of Newark about bringing their people over here and dropping them off at the truck stop?
There has not.
Communication?
Well, I'd like to talk to you outside the public meeting and give you a response rather than having it aired right now. But the answer is they're aware and they're also aware, there's other little parts to it that I would be happy to discuss with you.
They're aware that you're aware of what they're doing.
Yes, that's correct. That is correct. Anyone else have anything? Mr. Lemon?
With me being up here now, it's almost a hundred percent participation from the audience. The last time we met, we talked about water and we were going to go to the state to get someone to come up and explain the law. Where do we stand on that?
We had, to answer your question, I had the staff send to the mayor commissioners our water permit and our agreement with, is that what you're, in reference to? The agreement with Artesian and whether, I think the question that came up before was whether it was potable water or what type of water. And I think that in general, I think the answer is yes. I know that we're moving forward to try to get MDE up here. I don't think that we firmed up a date to ask those specific questions.
Well, they're not going to come up here and tell you what the permit says.
No, no, I know that.
They need the permit. And they're not going to tell you what the conditions are regarding the plan because we submitted the plan. They don't need to tell us what our plan is. So the question is, if you want to pursue Mr. Benner's plan for enlarging the raw water capacity of the town, that would be an issue that we need to address rather than substitute for the raw water for total water that we have under the plan we've submitted, which the board has been aware of. So that's where it is, they won't tell you what your permit is.
The water permit plan states that it has to be the twenty-five percent backup it actually has in our water permit plan, that it's water from Artesian, which is a potable water or contingency plan.
Yeah, but we're looking to the future.
That's correct.
And I quote, Mr. George said that he was going to have someone come up from the state and clarify the questions that came up in the meeting. So my question is, have we done that?
To answer the question, I don't think that we have scheduled that date, but that is, I think I, I don't want to say I was satisfied with reading the permits and I wasn't satisfied with the answers I got from after I read it. But we do, we have to meet with them prior to the 2019 agreement that we have with Artesian and even far greater, I think our water permit was renewed in 2014. I think our water permit was renewed in 2014, so our water permit is.
It's pending.
It's pending right now. So we have, it's been submitted back to MDE for approval, but normally those, how long is that water permit issued for?
Ten years.
Ten years. So we may be, I don't want to say we're, we may be boxed into a, where we'd have to do a change to the permit because it'll be renewed to us based on the backup plan that's in place today and, and we will have time. I, I know that's a crazy way to say it, but I think that once they issue the permit, we got 10 years, we're in a 10-year window that we'd have to get an amendment and good, bad or indifferent, part of the plan is the backup with, with Artesian is actually specked into the water permit.
But the idea, and I don't understand all this, to be honest with you, the idea is to take a look at Ken Benner's plan and see if we can affect it and, and see if, to sit down and really do it and, you know, and there, you can always go back and change a contract and do things like that, just because we have a contract with Artesian, in my opinion, doesn't mean that we have to stay with that till 2019 if we have a change. But what I brought up at the last meeting was, and I think the DJ over here says, use the word slow, we, we need to, we need to get moving on this and pursue what appeared to me to be a very good idea and, and would be very good for the town.
Thank you.
That's what I'm coming.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, I was.
Ron, would you like to say a few words to, like, Mr. Ron Waldrop?
Yes, I'm going to.
Now you got 100%.
100% participation.
I'm a work parent, sure. Everything's going good with me anyway.
You look good.
Congratulations. Grandma, what blessing. Twelve-year-old, do you mention?
Yes.
I have a six-year-old.
Teaching him?
Yeah. Yeah, I've got a smartphone, so I designed, because of the uni, well, because I decided, and I need that, I decided to, this is funny, I decided to get a smartphone because, like you say, there's a lot of info that you get on that side, it's a new idea, but I also have a dumb phone and I use that dumb phone more than I use a smartphone, unfortunately, because I don't understand the technology in here, okay? I, I'm going to make a small presentation tonight and it's not what you may think and you may be surprised, but I've got a little bit of what you're interested in.
Take my ass down, like in school.
I'm sorry?
Like in school.
Like in schools. I'll, I'll do these to you people. I don't know if they're one, two, three, four, five there.
Share with your neighbors. Here, give one to them.
Give them a little.
A shot with him.
I will, too. Okay, yeah. Okay, yeah. Yeah. No, no. Hey, well, here we go.
Mm-hmm.
I, I don't know if I told you all, I've been writing a book for the last five years, of course, the secretary's passed away, and didn't really change the book as far as I'm concerned, but, did you get one of those too, Chief? Excuse me. Did you get one of those too? One of those papers?
We'll, we'll pass it on down, pass it on down to them. We're good.
And, and Mr. Ron?
Mm-hmm, we're good.
The case, the other bird.
Can I read it real quickly?
Go ahead.
Okay. This was a message that, it appears that was from Ron to Staples. "I've been writing a book for the last five years and your store in Elton, Maryland has helped me very well with my needs, not to mention personally, and with empathy. My wife passed away on November 6, 2014. Your store staff have went beyond any of my needs to help me through my loss. I felt as they were part of my family. They are all recommended to me and noticed by your company, to all your, all your stores and corporate office. Thank you so much, Mr. Ronald Waldrop, 242 Douglas Street, Elton, Maryland." And then, of course, Staples responded back. "Thank you for sharing this with us, Ron. I'm sorry to hear about your loss. I'm happy our store associates could help you in some small way during this time." And Ron said, "You are very welcome."
Yes. I initially went to the store and they did some work on my computer and gentlemen told me I will have it back at a certain time. And I understand that they have problems, you know, I just, I anticipated maybe a date, you know, he had told me, I'll have it by tonight before we close. Well, I, I went up there and he said, he said, well, right now it's a, it's a, it's a quarter of the hour for closing.
Mm-hmm.
And I said, well, that's great, that's another two, you know, miles most of the way. Well, figured tomorrow, maybe tomorrow morning it'll be ready. I got in the morning and the question wasn't ready. And I was really, I was really upset. I was really upset because I haven't been, I haven't spent money there over the last five years.
Mm-hmm.
Phew, I mean, I was mad. And I thought about it. I said, look, I am going to retaliate. I want to retaliate. And you may, you may not like it, but I'm going to retaliate.
Mm-hmm.
And I thought some more. And I retaliated in that manner. That's the manner that I was really mad and very upset.
Okay.
But I retaliated in that manner because I know, being in business myself at one time, that, I might have told you this before and if I did, I'll just repeat it again, but someone, I cut out in front of someone in my company truck, it was a lady, and she called, she called the office and talked to the secretary and then I came and she said, Mrs. Austin, 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 called and she had a complaint about her company truck on my apartment. So she called, she called and she said, she wants to talk to you. So she told me and I, and I really felt bad because I'm the only, I'm the only one that had the truck. And I thought, oh, my, I, I didn't pacify her, I pacified her because women are pretty intelligent, they know when they're being pacified, somehow, I don't know how they know that, but they know. So what I did was I fired myself. I go and I said, I fired him. Oh, you don't have to do that, it wasn't that bad, you know, just like, no, no, I said, I'm totally sorry and I want you to know that the apologies do you and give you that and blah, blah, blah. But I felt better. I felt better about it. So evidently, I, I felt that way almost on my right.
Okay.
It, it's just something that I just was gifted with and so, but I use it in a way that is positive rather than negative.
Well, we certainly appreciate.
I wouldn't want somebody to be, you know, working all day and you're getting static over the phone, you're getting static from customers, you're getting static from here and static from there and so forth. Well, that's the way that I presented that.
Very good. And you're here to make a presentation tonight?
I'm, that, that, well, that, I, that, this is part of my.
Oh, okay.
This is part of what I'm doing right now, okay? I don't, usually when I talk, I'm accused, you don't talk loud enough. See, I'm probably one of the best, the best, a masterpiece, I'll say, at a presentation. Now, you can get your carpet along and I'll give you one.
You're doing.
And this is just a preview, okay? And anybody to think about this, we all would know what a sheep is and I thought, if I, if I told you this before, just don't shout the answer out or anything like that, but everyone knows what a sheep is. Everyone knows what a shepherd is, right?
Yes.
Well, if a shepherd had 26 sheep and one died, now you think about this and do your math or whatever you need to do, and one died, how many would you have left? Go give me the answer now, I'll give it to you in a little bit here. I went yesterday to pick up some clothes at the cleaners, had to have them shortened. That's the first time I did that because I mean, what she did, even the shed, just turn them on there and put safety pins around the inside. I'm like Becky, you know, probably Jingle. But I was in the cleaners and there was a Maryland State Police Department, I didn't know who it was at first and, of course, you all know me, well enough, when I get in a conversation, you got me for a while. You've been through it.
Oh, yeah.
So a lot of people that I talk to, I just keep talking and talking and talking and, and.
He'd be a good filibuster.
But I get their attention. I get their attention. That's the main idea is to get the attention of the person, okay? Anyway, he said, I said, are you on the force? He said, yes. And how long have you been on the force? He said, 28 years. I said, really? Because I didn't recognize him. I, you know, most officers come up, don't get drawn to us all the time. They like the coffee, but they do the donuts.
Mm-hmm.
Don't believe that. It's, I said to him, I said, I had a woman with him and I said, is that your wife? And he said, no, he said that we're friends. I said, oh, that's great. Then I asked him, I said, what's your name, Sergeant? He said, yeah, I was in the army and ironically, his name is the same as mine, his first name, Ronald, which is very unique and I'll get to that because I don't want, I could be for an hour and I would not bore you like in a.
I know you're not.
But we have things to.
Yes, you're not boring us, but we do have to move on.
So he said, you know, he said, do you mind giving your phone number? And I said, yeah, he's got a problem. He said, thing that bothers me, he says, I'm a sergeant and he says, I love Elkton. Exactly what he said. I support Elkton. Where he live? I live in Northeast. He supports the state. I mean, he's a whole nine yard, exactly the kind of man we need. But you know what? There's a lot of people in this town and in this county that loves Elkton, okay? So what do we do about them? We give them a chance, invest in Elkton. Huh? Give us $25 a month, we're calling a love offering. This goes to the town of Elkton for what they need to do with the business. Good idea? Will it work? Who knows? Try it. Yeah? You want me to go out and ask them? I'll give you 25.
Mm-hmm.
And I'll give you 20. No, I'm kidding you. $25 hours a month, just the support that's going on in the town of Elkton, they're showing you what they're doing, they're persistent in it, they're all of one accord and they all want the town to be noticed because there are things in Elkton. There are people in Elkton. Great idea, man. Great idea. The, I met another officer, I'm going to point him out, what was going on at the Dunkin' Donuts. And this is a fact, I'm going to tell you.
I, I know, Ron, you got to get to where you're going here for us.
Well, I am.
Okay.
You said we're going to the board. I know about.
I know, we're not bored, but we do.
I'm going to give you a little thing.
I know, but we do, we do have another meeting after this.
All right, we'll finish up.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Let me have, did anybody come to conclusion on that?
I'm going to say 25.
I would say 25.
What do you think, Chief?
Sounds like 25 to me, but.
Anybody else? Anybody out there?
I said 25, but in five minutes it's only 20.
No. You didn't, you wasn't paying attention.
I was going to say, repeat the question.
It's a trick question, but it's a proven point. The answer is 19.
All right, give us your, your.
A shepherd had had 26 sheep. Probably would have 19, correct?
Yeah, you're right.
26 sheep. But that ain't what you.
26.
It is, I'm from Detroit.
Oh, 26, I got you. 26, I got you.
Some of the best rapper come out of Detroit.
Okay.
Talk fast.
I got you.
And I could talk fast.
All right, you got us on that one.
Chief, I want to congratulate you again and again and again. Things are going just slow. I'm behind you 100%.
Thank you very much, Ron Waldrop. Appreciate it.
So that's about it. And the last thing comes this. Who, who's this with the Bryce, Bryce, you was at that?
We all, we all were. We all were.
Yep.
You all were?
Yep.
Yeah. Where'd that name come from?
A man by the name of Wright who founded church, that was his last name.
That's funny, that was my wife made the name, last name. I found out that my wife was Indian. She had Indian. I found out that she is indeed, you're going to be ready for this one, she is indeed a descendant of Geronimo.
Wow.
Okay? There's also royalty in the, out of England in her family. I did an ancestry job and I think I told you about painting someone and you said to show it to, to you, that's Geronimo.
Wow.
Okay? My wife had this in the attic, I have no idea how long she's had it, okay? I know it was a goo, I would imagine by the, something Schmidt. The names on it, it's a piece of board that it was drawn on, not canvas. I took it to the Historical Society, they told me to take it to a gallery and they would have to check it out, but somebody told me you had a lot, you knew a lot about paintings and drawings. Is that true?
Absolutely not.
Mr. Ron, I have something better for you.
I'm sorry?
On February the 21st upstairs, we have the Antique Road Show.
Okay. I'm not looking for one.
I know, but they'll tell you all about the painting.
I just have to know for a reason.
They'll tell you about the painting.
Okay. That would, I think that's about it, but what I'm, what I'm, the last thing I'm going to mention is I believe, well, I don't believe, I know, I'm going to do a motivational sheet. I've already got, by the way, I have a publisher interested in the book, very interested, and I have a producer that's interested, interested in a commentary, in a, not a commentary, what do you call it? do you call them? These are...
Documentary?
Documentary, okay? All right? On two families, important families, very important families. And they got to do this and that. So, that's where I'm headed with that. As far as the town, all things concerned, amen to you.
Thank you.
And I will be attending workshops and so forth in the future, as much as I can, maybe two or whatever, whatever it is it's going to be, but I've got a lot of things that I do. So, that's it.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you very much.
By the way, I'll show you what the, I'll show you what gets the kids' attention.
This gets the attention.
Oh, yeah, that's a good one.
Kids love it.
Well, we're going to have a closed meeting to discuss a contract with council and we will not be reconvening. I'd like to have a motion.
So, move.
Motion by Charles and a second by Van Riden, the DJ. And all in favor?
Aye.
All right.